Welcome to the council meeting of July 1st, 2025. If anyone in the audience is amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll deliver those to you. I have not seen any. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this soul of the representative House of America.
All right. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bush.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Del Warren.
Here.
Mary Nesto.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Satt.
Here.
And Councilmember Gitzier.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? All right. City manager.
Not at the time, Mr. Mayor.
Council board reports to share. All right. Deputy Mayor.
I went to the AWC conference last weekend in, kind of, Thank You City for, when we go. That's the all-Washington-Cities Conference. And I took some notes. It was very long. There was a lot of people and there's a ton of classes. There was more information than I could absorb, but I made some notes. So, let's see. So I took classes on collaborative and strategic leadership and conflict resolution with emphasis on human-centered leadership and how it intersects with emerging intelligent technologies, and explored adaptive planning strategies to support growth in small towns like ours. We also looked at fiscal and infrastructure realities, navigated discussions on infrastructure funding challenges and tight budgets, if we address balancing priorities amid budget cuts and revenue constraints, and strategic planning for APWA credit stations, which is for public works. And those were highlights for tools for sanctioning our public works departments. And that was very interesting going on there. For the economic outlook in Washington State, our state population growth is still growing. We're almost at 1% this year. Our median city growth for the entire state is just, it's like 0.65% average. Migration to the state between 2021 and 2024 was over 69,000 residents. And last year, we gained 43,200 new jobs. Washington currently ranks 15th nationally in growth rates since 2020. Manufacturing and retail jobs are declining, but service sector roles are rising here. And 2025 shows early signs of a job contradiction. And then particularly education is where most of our job losses are in the state right now. And despite our challenges, the, according to economists, our global economic growth is actually doing better than they had anticipated. For finance and trade, the average 30-year mortgage rate in 2025 across the entire U.S. is 6.8%. And our Washington State top imports are oil, gas, and motor vehicles. The 2025 export growth highlights, aerospace exports are at 82.5% and driven by trade with Mexico and China. Our export volumes are oil, metal, chemicals, and plastics now exceed pre-candemic levels, and machine computer exports have nearly returned to 2019 levels. It's kind of good to know where your money's coming and going. And then we also took classes on strategic growth planning, especially for small cities. Those were the classes I focused on. I took a class on the price of popularity affecting tourism-based economies because that is becoming important to our community. And it was important to review parliamentary procedures in local governance. So I was really excited to take that class, too. So thank you so much for that opportunity. I learned a lot, and hopefully your investment will seed the rich earth for me. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us here. I always find very useful information going to the conference. All right. Anybody else? I just wanted to say that what a great art, second annual art walk that we had this weekend. It was well-attended, very well-attended, and I hear a lot from the businesses that did very well. So thank all the volunteers, the vendors, the organizers, the sponsors for that event again. So, all right. Okay, moving on. Is there a motion to approve or consent agenda as published?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. The council invites the public to make public comment on matters of city business. Comment shall be made to the entire council, not an individual. Councilmember, please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption to our meeting. If a reasonable disruptive conduct continues, you'll be asked to leave. Donna, anyone sign up for general public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Our first speaker is Mary Edgelson.
Speaker from the mayor, Mr. Kim, City Manager, Councilmember. I'm here about a situation that happened, and it has to do with respect for people in the city, whether young, middle-aged, or old. We are the people that vote for you, people. Whether you got elected, whether by composure, by your brains, whatever, we are the people that put you in. We are the people that like you, we are the people that vote for you directly. So I was at the last meeting where we could speak, for the open speak, and the meeting was over. And I'm not directing this to anyone, so I don't want anyone to feel like I'm kicking on them. This was general, but the people that this happened to me, you will know that. The meeting was over, and I approached the table. And when I approached the table, the water pumps were off. Everything was done. The gavel was hit. And as usual, we can walk up and speak to our councilmembers. We can ask a question. We can talk to you. We talked to the city manager. Somebody slammed down their computer and told me to get the hardware from the desk. And they wouldn't speak to me. Now, I didn't make a scene. I didn't give a man. I pondered on this. I would like to write an apology for the person that did it. The people in this town and myself deserve respect when we come to the meetings, when we vote. If you don't want our votes, keep treating us that way, because you won't get our votes. We'll make sure that other people don't vote for you. Rule of mouth, life of business, is one of the most important things. And when the city council treats people bad, there's a problem, people. There's a big problem. You people are no better than anybody sitting out here. You get paid for your job. You have a job to do. You are better because you are our city council. You're the people that we rely on to make good decisions for this town. So I don't think it should be, that we should be disrespected. And I'm going to tell you something, you can take it or leave it, but the consensus in this town is this is the most disrespectful council that we have had since we've had council in 2016, when we had the council. Do people don't, we have a mayor who dresses with a suit and tie, our city manager comes in dressed wrong, and there have been times where some of you have come in dressed like you just came out of a barbecue. I mean, this is the city council.
Thank you, Mary.
So let's show a little more respect.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jackie Jewitt.
Jackie Jewitt, shall we? So I just have to say that, also, I have something to say about that disrespect, because that's happened to us, and it's why a certain individual who is super unprofessional in their job, gets outplayed a fire. So, a little, a little tinge there. All right. This is the first, in a three-part series, the cost of homelessness. Foiled housing first. Homeless policies have resulted in more people suffering on our streets. In turn, this puts more stress on local taxpayers to the public, to fund the public services. The growing homelessness population requires. We will examine these startling costs and explore if focusing on treatment instead of housing is more effective and efficient. Another new report shows that Washington State has become a destination, location for our country's homeless individuals. Further, once the homeless individual arrives in our state, our taxpayer-funded services fail to help them with their addiction and mental health problems, and they become chronically homeless and a lifelong drain on public services. Respected homelessness researcher Dr. Robert Marmen conducted extensive interviews with more than 400 homeless individuals in Spokane. And this is what he found. 50.2% experienced homelessness first outside of Spokane. 63% did not currently or have never had family living in Spokane, and 80% were born outside of Spokane. And once the out-of-stateer arrives in Washington, the public services available fail to address the real issues causing their homelessness: addiction and mental health. Remember, a large survey of homeless individuals by the University of California found that 75% self-reported that they had addiction issues, and 78% had mental health issues. Instead, public resources are spent on expensive, long-term public housing projects, where the individual continues to suffer from their addiction and mental health issues due to the lack of the treatment options. They need help! The report's findings are very similar to a recent Discovery Institute survey, where the survey was conducted with Seattle's homeless population. Here's the count: 49.7% experienced homelessness first outside of King County; 66.8% do not or have never lived in Seattle-King County; and 86.6% were born outside of Seattle or King County.
Thank you.
Next speaker, enjoy.
So the individual in question, who's unprofessional, is Eric. I'll just say the name. He blows kisses to people when they're not looking, and spurts and smiles, and makes snide comments. If you all remember right after the gavel, when he said, "Fuck you, Dean Jewitt. I fucking hate you. Fuck you, Dean Jewitt." You all remember that. That was Eric Anisca. Dr. Marmen explains why these figures' results are very disturbing. They're too related effects. It's how it's now moved from the person having less than a chance of recovery, and they're diluting your resources by half, to the people who are actually homegrown, people that are in your own community. Many homeless individuals move to Washington with the belief that they will financially prosper in the home state of Amazon, Microsoft, and Boeing. Yet when they arrive, they learn they don't have the necessary skills to obtain the position or are unable to perform the job due to addiction issues. Others come to our state because of numerous taxpayer-related programs, such as King County's thorough housing initiative where homeless individuals are given free housing units that cost each of the taxpayers more than $330,000 to purchase. It's worth noting that 3/4 of the homeless population admitted they have an addiction problem. The website makes it very difficult for a struggling addict to find treatment help. The only mention of addiction assistance is not on the website's main community resource page. Oddly, you must click through many contacts just to be able to find a Washington Recovery Hotline. So, in closing, Dr. Marmen advocates the following strategy: prioritize funding of effective treatment programs, create paths for those with long-term ties to the region and reunited with their family, support long-term recovery by supporting programs that train homeless individuals to receive meaningful employment, help those who accept treatment, and enforce public safety laws on those who refuse. We all know how many people accepted help several years ago when we had to clear a rural park. What was that? That was a big goose egg. Zero. We had individuals come up here and tell us how much it was going to cost us in law enforcement and jail and all this stuff to clean out the park. How many people were ticketed? Zero. How many people were arrested? Zero. So there was no cost. Actually, once we actually start enforcing the ordinances and the laws that are out there, it's amazing. I would like to do a public records request right now on the ETS truck. Where are the permits and the conditional use permits for that vehicle to be parked where it's at? Plus, it needs to be moved. Sidewalks need to be cleared. It's an ADA violation. I had to call in twice this weekend. Seven days ago, I sent an email to Mark, Chief Cost Stat, I believe, and every single one of you guys. How many people responded? Big goose egg. Zero. So this is your time. Where's our time? No interaction and no town hall meeting.
Thank you.
When's that going to happen?
Our next speaker is Shannon Barberich.
Hello, City Council, Mayor. My name is Shannon Barberich, and I'm currently a candidate to be on the city council. As I was going through some paperwork for endorsements and just telling people who I am, and collectively gathering all the way.
Really, really quick, Shannon, you can't talk about the election at all.
Okay. But anyways, I was putting all my stuff together, right? I was remembering back in 2023, I was part of, I don't know if you guys know, the Washington Recovery Alliance. They're an amazing group, and they're an amazing group of people who have been, have substance abuse, mental health, who have found help, hope, and recovery, and come together to make bills pass, like House Bill 2319 and SB 23, which I worked on with. And we got $150 million per deal for the state of Washington to help with recovery housing, recovery cafes, to help the people that need it the most. And fast forward two years later, and we're here, and we're having problems at rural park, I'm just not understanding where that money went. I'm not here to be upset, and if I sound like I'm upset, I'm not mad, I'm just curious. I'm just wanting to make some clarification to where this money went, because with this money, we wouldn't need to rely on our community to pay for that, because people like me went and testified. I don't know if you guys have ever been to legislation and know what that is. You know, I'm captain, the district captain for legislation, we're in our district. And so what that means is that I get everybody who wants to testify together, whether that's on a Zoom phone call, whether that's on just a regular telephone, whether we go meet them, person, you meet them wherever they are, so that that way you can compile their stories, right? Because our stories mean so much, right? When we compile them, we use the correct words, and we become the kindest and love in our hearts, we can move mountains, right? And so it's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff goes into this, right? My heart goes into this. You know, I had lost, I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, but I have a very deep, very deep, my heart, I lost my brother, my baby brother.
What?
Dismembered. And it broke my heart, and it broke me to my core. And so when I went to go be part of the Washington Recovery Alliance to fix these issues, I wanted to bring home, to my hometown, the place where I live, where my kids are, where my grandbabies will be, to make it better. But these funds, where did they go? I wish that I could think of some pretty good time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dave Mortensen.
All right. Thank you for letting me speak here. One thing I'd really like the city council to even kind of push you, is invest in a better audio, visual. I've been away on vacation, but I follow your meetings, but really hard to hear anybody that doesn't speak up. And the video quality is really quite poor. So if you have some extra money laying around, you'd have a good way to use it. Thank you for the positive movement on rural parks, but there's more needs to be done. I go down there every day. We just came right before the meeting. There's people doing openly using drugs down there. There was a lady that was actually stripping off all her clothes as we went by. So I think that needs to be pursued, and, you know, constant police pressure to clean that out of here. The other thing I really want to talk about, about eight weeks ago, I gave you guys a handout that we went out and actually cowled up every homeless camp above the Shelton Yacht Club along the Riddler tracks. That was, I think, better than eight weeks ago, and yet not a city, single city council member has talked to me about this personally. And this has been eight weeks ago. But come on. We know that there's a huge problem out there, but, you know, we're trying to do our part to help you do your job, but you gotta meet us halfway. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to speak, Mayor.
Thank you, Donna. All right. We have a presentation, a proclamation tonight, People's First, and Councilmember Budateris is going to read that for us.
This is a proclamation designated July 2025 as Americans with Disabilities Month. Whereas, the city of Shelton recognizes the need to celebrate the success of the Americans with Disabilities Act for individuals in Shelton and Mason County. And whereas, the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990, to ensure several rights in our community, of our community members with disabilities. And whereas, we recognize that individuals with disabilities are people first and deserve to be recognized as active members of our communities. And whereas, all people have the right to speak up and speak out for themselves, whether we use our voices, assistive technology, sign language, or body movements, and that what we say needs to be valued and respected in all aspects of our lives. And whereas, all people have the right to make decisions that affect and direct their lives through equal access to information, resources, facts, and support, and assistance from significant people in our lives in a self-directed process to form decisions. And whereas, inclusion means that everyone is valued, respected, and included in their communities in ways that are meaningful to them, and that we each have a role to play to make inclusion of people with disabilities a priority and a reality in our community. And whereas, people with disabilities have the right to employment that complement their abilities and that provides a living wage, opportunities for advancement, and personnel fulfillment. And whereas, people with disabilities deserve equal opportunities to utilize public transportation for work, medical needs, education, recreation, family and community needs, and that transportation helps to make and keep us independent. And whereas, we believe that no person should be segregated from their communities, and that appropriate funding to support enhancing community services must be provided. Now, therefore, the Shelton City Council does hereby proclaim July 2025 as Americans with Disabilities Month in the city of Shelton, and urges all community members, elected leaders, medical providers, educators, and businesses to support people with disabilities in our community in their efforts to live safe, healthy, happy, and productive lives.
Thank you, councilmember. Now we have a resolution for Well 1 Pump Replacement Design. Assistant Public Works Director Aaron Nix has details for us.
Mayor, council, thank you. Aaron Nix, Assistant Public Works Director. I bring forward to you a budgeted item that was funded this year regarding to a Well 1 project. Just some quick updates, that Well 1 pressurization project is almost done. We will have the new chlorine buildings in in the market. Those are so that we can actually treat water after it wells. This particular one, again, was a budgeted item in this year's budget. As part of upgrades to the facilities that we have, a pump within well number one was placed in 1989, and it's time to replace that particular piece. In addition, we plan to put what they call BFDs, which are variable frequency drives. What they do is they keep the pump from going on and off continuously. The idea being starting and stopping them wastes a lot of energy. What these variable frequency drives is, what they do is they basically change the voltage that goes into the pump and ramps it very slowly up and down to maintain a constant pressure. A lot of utilities use these. It's a good technology. What it means is that our pumps are going to last even longer, and we will not have to take them out as often to rewind them. So with that, I have before you a resolution. What we'd like to do is we have great support, our consultant engineers in order. We would like to enter into contract with them through this fourth quarter. Again, the amount for the entire project was $180,000. This design work is about $70,000. In addition, once that's done, the rest of the money will pay for replacement of the pump, as well as the installation of the BFDs. So we're hoping, this is a business item, I'll bring this back to you again, but we're hoping that you might move this to the next meeting to the action. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to place resolution number 1390-0625 to the July 15, 2025 Action Agenda for further consideration.
All right. Comments or questions from the council?
Got to be done.
All right. We have a motion and a second to place resolution number 1390-0625 on the July 15, 2025 Action Agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right. The only action item is a resolution from some joint city-county paving projects. Aaron has more information.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Back in June, if you recall, the council passed an interlocal agreement with Mason County to basically share services with them. It works very well for us in that it's cheaper, it's a lot easier in the sense that if we utilize county personnel and state personnel, we can work through procurement issues, those kinds of things. So based on that contract that was approved in June, we are preparing and planning to begin paving work. And there's a map in your pocket that identifies the overlay areas that are identified, things like that. Based on how we budgeted this, the price for the asphalt from this project, our threshold is $150,000. And we can't go above that without going into formal procurement stuff. But we're hoping that the Council allows us to proceed with this. Again, our intention is to pay on the 15th, 16th of this month. We're going to send out door hangers on July 7. We're also going to put out our message boards, just kind of letting people know up in this Mountain View area that this work is going to happen. We understand that it's going to cause delays, but we have bypasses in place so that people can still get around. Our desire is, and we would like to bypass the three-touch rule, not identified in here, and allow us to enter into that contract with the county to get that work done.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Really quick. Mark just not got a three-touch on here. Does that matter?
No.
Okay. We have reading a resolution number 1391-0625.
Resolution number 1391-0625, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the Public Works Department to utilize the existing interlocal agreement with Mason County and joint city-county courses to complete the 2025 West Mountain View paving project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 1391-0625 as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
Just want to thank Aaron again for all your work at Public Works, especially with our roads, our regular condition index, and also with the quantity and quality of our water, as in the previous resolution. And pass on my thanks to your crew and to everyone who works in the department keeping our city running and for the water that we have. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I'm sorry, just quickly, I should have mentioned this really important thing, especially with the TBD coming to the board and quotes. This money is going to, this project is being fully funded by the resources we get from the transportation benefit of the district. So I'm just letting you know that. It helps us for sure. It helps us for sure as far as getting the state in progress.
Thank you. And thank you for working, and Mark, our city manager, for negotiating, getting this work done with the county this year. Working with our county partners is really saving us a lot of money. This is about a $400,000 savings?
Yeah, pretty close, yeah.
So thank you, guys.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1391-0625 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Erin. Mark, I know you've been busy all week. City manager, report.
All week? It's only Tuesday.
Well, the last.
Yeah, I want to reiterate the important relationship we have with Mason County and being able to get this work done. We really are stretching those dollars, those transportation benefit dollars as much as we can, not only with the funds, grant funds that we're matching, but to get local roads paved and improved. Those grant funds aren't available, so it's really important to have funding mechanisms there, and to have almost a mile paved this summer up on West Mountain View is really important. The crews are up there digging out some of the failures, repaving those, so we're not laying new asphalt over some of the weaker spots, the raising iron, if you will, so some of the manholes and things like that, and then they'll go back through and they'll put gravel down on the shoulders that, you know, eliminate that lift when the new paving goes down. So really grateful to our crews and the skill that they have in order to get us to the place that we are today with some of these street projects. With the impending Fourth of July holiday this Friday, I want to remind everybody in the public that fireworks are still banned in the city of Shelton and have been for some time. We've got a couple message boards up reminding folks of that. If there is a, a lot of times people ask how they can notify the city. The best way is through the non-emergency line at Macecom 4264441. It's not an immediate emergency unless somebody is hurt, there's a fire or something like that, and that's the best way to contact them. They're really busy on the Fourth of July, there's a lot of injuries and things like that that happen, so not utilizing the 911 system will help them out, and they can designate that. Next week, we not only have Movies in the Park starting on Friday, but Shelton Rotaries, or excuse me, Schukum Rotaries, yeah, Music in the Park series starts on Thursday as well, so starting those, that kind of back-to-back entertainment series at Nealon Park on Thursday and Friday nights, we're really looking forward to that. And with the council's approval, I would propose that we cancel next week's study session. We're just compiling more information for a more robust study session later in the month, so if you don't mind, I'd propose that we cancel the July 8 study session, and we'll see you again on the 15th.
I don't mind a day off.
Any questions?
No, I don't think so.
No.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Does the council have any new items for discussing tonight?
Just wanted to reiterate that life force is a big party, but remember that we do have veterans with PTSD, we do have animals that are very much affected by the explosions and the vibrations of our fireworks, and that it is illegal within city limits, so please, not inside city limits. Thank you.
It's been really hot, and it's easy to have a little bit of breathe, and so when we're laying on fireworks, that brings a threat of fires to our community, and I would really love to not worry about that this season. I don't want to worry about my neighbors' homes burning down. I care about the all too much. So the fireworks, I know they're fine, but if we could not do none of this, we'd really appreciate that.
All right. So it looks like we cancel our study session for the 8th. On the 15th so far, we have a financial report, we have no business at this time, or public green, that could change maybe, and our actual item would be the Gray Osburn well one pump we talked about tonight. So with all that, our meeting is adjourned at 6:34 PM.